With this week's packet. That said, does anybody from city council have any questions regarding chapter 150, International Property Maintenance Code update? That we could go ahead and address tonight? If not, we can go ahead and move on.
I have another one.
Please.
Enforcement. So, how do we know whether people have screens or not? And how, in a town this size, how do we find that out and enforce that? As an example.
Yeah, so with our nuisances and property maintenance, these are all complaint driven. So, let's say we have a tenant that's living in an apartment complex or a rental house, and they don't think those conditions are up to what our International Property Maintenance Code, they could ask the building official to examine that. The building official would then go out, make a determination. If there is some remedy that's necessary, a letter would be written with a timeframe. And if that isn't met, then the city can then come in and put screens on a window, let's say, and then assess the property owner for that. So, right now, complaint driven is the way that we would know about this.
So, it's similar to the nuisance properties and things that we've dealt with in the past?
Correct.
Based off the thirty-some odd, forty percent properties that have been looked at already in the rental community, did we run into a lot of issues regarding any of these violations?
If they have, if we have, they have been remedied. So, if, once they, they get the feedback that they need to fix something, they don't get their rental license until it's fixed. Now, we're, with this Logis software, we're gonna really, really get a handle on rental units in the city and being able to track these things better as far as situations where they're not meeting the, the international building code and we can follow up better. We have a better tracking system with this software.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for waiving the first reading of the proposed amendment to chapter 150 of the La Sueur City Code and direct staff to bring the second reading back to city council at the June 11th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We now move on to nine Charlie, which is our chapter 55, Stormwater Utility Amendment, first reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, the Personnel and Budget Committee was tasked with looking at our current stormwater ordinance, which is chapter 55 in our city code. There was a Personnel and Budget Committee meeting held last week in which the, the committee looked at the various options that were brought forward. So, the options that we discussed at the Personnel and Budget Committee was the option to use an impervious surface analysis to determine the residential units for stormwater and charge accordingly. So, what that means is that we would look at every parcel within the city, determine how much of that parcel is impervious, and then assign a value for a certain square footage of impervious and then charge that out accordingly.
Would there be a cost associated with that?
There is a cost. Initial cost was $10,000, ongoing annually of around $2,500, and that's estimated. The second option was to modify the existing fee determination schedule, and the third was to be do nothing, leave it how it is. So, the impervious surface analysis, the initial cost, $10,000, ongoing annual update costs of around $2,500. The Personnel and Budget Committee determined that not to be viable due to the costs associated with it. The second option, or actually the third listed previously, to do nothing, it was determined not to be the course of action recommended by the Personnel and Budget Committee. So, essentially, that leaves the, the amendment or the modification of the existing fee determination schedule. And the current, just to recap, the current fee determination schedule has six tiers, and one of the exemptions are properties that are located within the FEMA floodplain. Now, the FEMA floodplain is either a 100 or a 500-year flood zone, and FEMA determines what those are through spatial analyses. So, what the Personnel and Budget Committee came up with for the proposed changes were to combine the last two tiers of the fee determination schedule into one and change that residential equivalency factor to .25, and then also to add the parcels located in the FEMA floodplain to the lowest tier possible regardless of size. Now, the idea behind the, the floodplain change was because those properties, those property owners utilize the, the stormwater infrastructure within the city, not necessarily adjacent to their property, but as the, as a whole within the city, using the streets, things like, of that nature. So, if you can see these two tables, we can look at what the two different projection, or revenue projections are. So, the first table is the revenue projections for the current structure that we have. As you can see, there are six tiers. You can see how many parcels are associated with each tier and how much each tier will generate as far as income on a monthly basis, and then on the bottom on a annual basis. So, the current structure is estimated to bring in around $168,504. With the proposed changes, with the combination of the, the last two tiers, along with adding the floodplain parcels in, which totaled up to 83 floodplain parcels, that annual revenue goes down to $152,019. Essentially, this is a reduction of $16,485, which was in, in tune with what we were estimating at the Personnel and Budget Committee. You can see the fee schedules, that the current one is up top and the projected one is down below. So, you'll have a criteria of between zero and .5, .5 and one acre, one and two, two and three, and then anything above three. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions. We're looking at, again, waiving the first reading of this proposed amendment to chapter 255. Direct staff to schedule a public hearing for the June 11th meeting and continue, continuation of the second reading of the ordinance. I'm gonna put it back on this, this slide. If there are any questions, I'll, I'll entertain them at this time.
Just want to be clear that everybody understands that when the Personnel and Budget Committee met, we certainly took a lot of time to study this issue, and we wanted to make sure that we are gonna be fair to everybody within the community. Now, that said, that $152,000 that we'd be drawing for 2018 as opposed to the $168,000 that we were initially looking at, might as well figure that if we were doing an impervious study, we would have been spending an additional $10,000. So, this way, there's no $10,000 to pay. We're certainly not gonna make the target that we initially thought we were, but we're gonna be giving some relief to some people that have some properties that are of larger sizes.
And I would add, we're not locking ourselves in then to an annual cost for having this evaluated every year.
That is correct, council member Crookman. And also, just to also keep in mind that the stormwater, chapter 55, Stormwater Utility Amendment is something that we go ahead and evaluate on an annual basis. So, these are the 2018 rates that you see, both current and what's gonna be proposed. When the Personnel and Budget Committee meets for developing the 2019 budget, we will also be looking at what we may have to do in regards to stormwater. Keep in mind, for those that do not know this, stormwater charges in the past in the city of La Sueur all came out of the general fund. This is one of the reasons why we went this way, so we could go ahead and alleviate that task from the general fund and certainly go ahead and pass the cost on so that we would have apples, apple monies to take care of our stormwater concerns as a city moving forward.
Can I just, I'd like to reiterate what our city administrator emphasized about everyone, regardless of where the stormwater infrastructure is, benefits, even though it's, may not be right next to your property. And that's, to me, that, when we discussed this in our committee, that was a key, that we need an improved and an ongoing good stormwater system, and everybody that travels around the community is gonna benefit from it, not just at your property.
Any additional comments or questions? If not, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion to waive the first reading of the proposed amendment to chapter 55 of the city code and direct staff to bring the second reading back to city council at the June 11th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move to item nine Delta, the land purchase for PIDs 21.520.090, 21.5.0100, and 21.520.0110, first reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, I will get to the map because that is probably the most important thing here. These three parcels are located adjacent directly to the south of the wastewater treatment plant. They are currently owned by Hag Partners, which was previously Genesis. These properties have been identified as strategic in, in order to expand the wastewater treatment plant into, in the future. One thing that a relationship with Hag Partners or Genesis afforded us is the ability to engage them in conversations before this, these properties would go for sale. So, I'm gonna hop back to the, the previous slide. We have been working with Hag Partners for the last couple months on these. City attorney has drafted up the purchase agreement, which you have seen. It allows for future expansion. Now, MRFPUCK has budgeted in their capital planning $250,000 for this expenditure. Like the land that the wastewater treatment plant currently sits on, La Sueur will hold the deed and the asset for, for the land. The agreed upon purchase price is $197,920, and staff feels that after discussing it and the potential for those properties, that, that price is appropriate based on the location of it. The biggest fear is that somebody else in this situation, a land speculator, could come out and try to grab that land, and then in the future, that cost would increase for the city. Again, it's three parcels that are located just south of the wastewater treatment plant. If there are future expansions necessary due to the city growing or increased regulations by the MPCA or EPA, this would afford us the ability to expand if necessary. If, if you're familiar with the layout of the wastewater treatment plant, there isn't land to expand to the north, so this is really the only way that we can, we can expand. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have about the, the proposed purchase. Again, in order for the city of La Sueur to purchase any property, we have to go through and we have to purchase it via ordinance. So, what you'll see in front of you is the ordinance, and then you'll see the purchase agreement. If, if a second reading is, is proposed, what we'll do is we'll advertise for the public hearing and then have the second reading at the June 11th meeting. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Could you just, the county valued this at $162,000. We negotiated $197,000, and, and I'm not disputing that, but I think it's worthwhile explaining, and you partially explained the fact that we don't want someone else buying this up and then holding us hostage in the future. We want control over the space for future development, I understand that. Later on, we talk about city property that's valued at 30-some thousand, and we're, we're gonna sell it for five. And, and so the, the thought process, obviously, is a little different there. And I think it's worthwhile talking about your rationale for why you think this is a, a good deal for the city.
Yeah, I can, I can talk about that. So, a little bit about this area, it's, it's extremely landlocked, so the land in that area is valuable because there just isn't any more there. The lot up on Third Street, now that's a lot, there are numerous lots that I would say are comparable to that lot around the city. So, that, in my opinion, drives the cost down of that lot and, and the price up on these. So, just with a conversation with Hag Partners, they've had to do a lot of remediation work on that site. One thing on this site is that there is a building that is usable, so there is a structure on this facility that the wastewater treatment plant could use. The other, other parcel that you mentioned has, it's just bare land. So, there's a cost of that, of that structure as well built into this. If you look at the Agri-Pier land, roughly, I think it's seven parcels, the, the price per acre on those is roughly $75,000 or $76,000 per acre. We're paying 87 roughly for these three parcels, or right around 90, I believe, but we do have a structure on here too. So, looking at that, comparable in the industrial areas, I think we're right in the ballpark. This is essentially what the director of Hag Partner, Genesis, Joe Spindler, got it kind of estimated by a realtor, what they could, what they could list it for, and that's kinda where we, where we ended up. So, does that answer your question as far as rationale goes?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I do have a question, just for clarity. MRFPUCK has money set aside, but we're expending it and we're holding the deed. Explain all of that, please.
Yes, so the, the land that the wastewater treatment plant is currently built on is owned by the city of La Sueur. The city of La Sueur owns that deed, earn that asset. Through MRFPUCK, the determination has been that they're, that they will not hold any assets, new assets, even though they, they probably should with their fund balance that they currently have. So, somebody has to own it. So, it's either Henderson or La Sueur owns it. It makes sense that La Sueur owns it, they're the majority stakeholder in the plant, and what we, we would do is go back to MRFPUCK and request reimbursement for this. Now, they, they budgeted $250,000 for these three parcels, so their budget, I know they've had some expenditures come in a little over budget, so this is good that this one is under budget, but, yeah, so it'll be kind of a pass through, through MRFPUCK for the city of La Sueur to own, but it'll all be part of the complex, the wastewater treatment plant complex.
And I did have a couple of points to point out on the commercial purchase agreement. B, we want to change that amount to $196,920 after the earnest money. We also want to change this to say city of La Sueur. So, other than that, does anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if you would, I think to be clear to everybody, would you please point to where those are?
On the commercial purchase agreement, it's item B, under two. Two B, the amount of $196,820 should be paid on the closing date with certified funds. That amount should say $196,920. And after item 21, the merger clause, we want that to say for the buyer, the city of La Sueur. Does everybody see that?
Were we trying to get Round Lake to do it?
Yeah, I don't think that was gonna happen.
Yeah, we obviously borrowed the, the purchase agreement template from the city of Round Lake, and, yeah, we will make those changes.
So, we want to make sure that those are done. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion under waive the first reading of the proposed purchase of three parcels for Hag Partners and direct staff to bring the second reading back to city council at the June 11th meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any additional discussion?
Yes, I, go back to paragraph two, I wanna make sure we're clear here. The purchase price is $197,920.
Uh huh.
Earnest money's $1,000, and then $196,820 would be due.
$196,920.
$920, okay, that's the change.
That's the difference.
It's from nine, 820 becomes 920. Got it, thank you, that wasn't clear.
I know neither of these are big things, but we just want to make sure that we have them documented properly so nothing gets held up with the purchase. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to nine Echo, which is the annexation of PID 10.999.8100, 10.999.0260, and 10.999.7910. This is the second reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, before you is the annexation of these three parcels that are located adjacent to the La Sueur Airport. Now, these three parcels were acquired for navigation rights of the airport in order to meet FAA standards. So, this total area is 13.93 acres. One thing that we will do is petition Ottawa Township. These are, these are city-owned properties, so there's no levied amount of money that goes towards Ottawa Township, so I don't see an issue with them not waiving any rights to it. This is the second reading. After the second reading is wa, if the, if the second reading is waived, we will then proceed and, and button up this annexation process and move this along. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have.
What can this property be used for?
So, this parcel, I'll maybe point up here, I don't have my, the, the 8100, part of this parcel can have structures on it, so this could be potentially something park-related, gazebo, something like that. All the other parcels, the other two, you can do essentially nothing on them as far as structures go, just from, because of their location adjacent to the, the runway. So, the, you can have like a road or something like that, like, but no, no, no permanent structures on these.
No hunting or anything?
Well, no, no hunting. They're, they're within city limits, so there's, there's no, no hunting within city limits in that area.
Any additional questions or concerns? If not, look for a motion to waive the second reading of the attached ordinance and direct staff to continue the process to annex PID 10.999.8100, 10.999.0260, and 10.999.7910 into the city of La Sueur.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move into line item nine Foxtrot, sale of PID 21.999.0370, 21.999.0380, 21.999.0362, Again, this is the second reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, I will invite Community Development Director Samantha DiMaggio up here to talk about this, this is an exciting deal.
Good evening, Mayor Hag, members of the council. Prior to my arrival, I know that the city of La Sueur had acquired these seven parcels. It was the intention at the time that the Second Street project was gonna completely go through those parcels and straighten Second Street out, and as you know, that did not happen. Therefore, we, last year, around January, I think the council authorized me to send a letter to Agri-Pier offering them the parcels for sale. They have come back to us with a purchase price of $115,000 for all of the parcels. The parcels are being sold as is, so they know that ahead of time, and that is my staff recommendation that we go ahead and sell those to Agri-Pier.
Very nice to see you, our Community Development Director, Ms. DiMaggio.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all the hard work you put towards this.
Thank you.
And getting this cleaned up finally. Any questions or concerns that we can share with our Community Development Director?
Just to look ahead, then, then Second Street is presumably gonna be shut down on that area. Second Street will go up to, I don't know what street it is, but then it'll be shut down for a block or so.
And you know, to be honest with you, council member, I'm not sure if that's their intention or not, we probably have the right-of-way for Commerce Street, so I don't know if they're gonna ask us to vacate that right-of-way. I think this just gives them potential to expand their facility, should need be in the future, and currently, they are parking on those parcels, so I think their lack of parking might alleviate some of our issues that we currently have on Main Street down towards their facility, so I look forward to seeing what they do with those parcels, and I'm also excited to have them back on the tax roll.
Any other questions or concerns? Well, if not, I'll entertain a motion to waive the second reading of the ordinance on the sale of the seven PIDs that were referred to. For $115,000 to Agri-Pier Incorporated, these properties are being sold as is.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you so much, Ms. DiMaggio. Well, I guess you're gonna maybe be up here for the next one as well. Now, we have nine Golf, which is the sale of PID 21.999.0050. This is the second reading.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, I will again turn this over to Ms. DiMaggio.
So, the city of La Sueur has owned this property, as far as I know, for around 20 years. I think at one time, they were using it for bike storage, there was a garage on it. That garage has since been taken down, it's just been a vacant lot. We did have an adjacent property owner make an offer to the city to acquire this parcel. We did not have it publicly listed for sale. He came to us, asked us if we would be able to acquire it. One of the reasons that I think that we looked at potentially selling this parcel is because I haven't personally seen this, but I've been made aware of some parking challenges at the apartment building next door, that maybe we don't have enough parking spots there, and so I think this might alleviate some of the traffic issues or backups that we have along that street in front of there. The taxable value to me seems quite high. I don't know that we've sold a single-family lot in the middle of town for that price in a long time, so I thought that was a little bit strange, but I also don't know that that's been a parcel that's been on the county's radar because it has been off the tax rolls for 20 years. So, I'm not sure if that's really an accurate number or not. As I said, we were offered $5,000 for it. I think we would have a hard time trying to sell it because of the apartment building next to it. The good news is for the other adjacent property owners is there is a nice tree line that I'm assuming that they're gonna keep in place that does block the neighbors from whatever goes there, so I'm hoping that that's a benefit to them as well. And as I said, I, I think we would have a hard time trying to sell it for a single-family development. I don't know that we would be able to sell that lot.
Question, to the best of your knowledge, Ms. DiMaggio, is the intent of Dennis Investments Incorporated to go ahead and you take this property then and use it as a parking lot then for the apartment?
Yeah, they realize that they have challenges with their parking right now, and I don't know if at the time when we, when they were built, I guess I don't even know how those apartments were, we might have had less parking ratios. It's usually so many parking spaces per unit. I don't know if we didn't make them add enough parking at the time, I'm not sure what happened, but I've heard that they do have challenges there, they have no intention of building another building. It would either be used for additional parking or for some green space.
So, in connection with that, are there some standards that have to be met in order to create more parking space to use for that apartment building?
There's not, and I think in that area, I don't know if their current parking lot is paved or not. I'm not sure if that's something that we'd want to see have happen or not, I guess that would be something that I would, you know, defer to Jasperon, I guess I'm not sure how water is in that area, if there's a runoff issue or not. I want to make sure that we don't cause any type of drainage issues for other properties adjacent to there, since it is grass now. I do see a little bit of cement pad, but I don't know what adding additional cement would do to that area, I'm not sure if it would have a big impact or not.
I wasn't necessarily thinking, I was thinking, I think the parking lot they have is asphalt, isn't it?
Yeah, I can, I can add that. I've had some conversations with this group about what their phase-in plan is. Essentially, what they would do is if they would acquire the property, they would have some temporary, what we would call like gravel, it's an approved surface, and then they would develop plans to expand that entire parking lot. So, it'd be temporary gravel with the potential in the future to be asphalt and extension. If you've seen the site, you can see there's a great difference between their current, their current parking lot and what the Third Street garage was at, so there would have to be some material taken out for that, and just to plan and engineer that thoughtfully to incorporate stormwater into it, would, will take a little bit of time. So, that's the plan right now, from my understanding is to have it be temporary, let's say, when they need to remove snow from their parking lot, they can have residents park up there with minimal improvements.
So, when they do that, make an improvement, does that require a building permit?
I'd have to check.
I don't think for a parking lot, we do have a permit for driveways, but I'm not sure if a building permit is required for a parking lot or not, I guess we'd have to ask Justin about that.
Yeah, if they would, if they would modify the curb cut at all, they would need a, they would need a permit if they would use the existing curb cut in the existing drive approach, we would not charge a permit for that. Eventually, they will need one, but if they do some temporary fixes, they, they could potentially get by with not getting a, a building permit.
I have two questions. One, did we check with the county about the amount that they're claiming it's, they think it's worth compared to what perhaps it is worth? Have we done that?
I, I have not. I, I have not reached out to the county. It's essentially a, a formula based on what, what the code is, what the zoning is and what the code is compared to the acreage.
Second question. As we deal with property, why is it that we are not getting a commercial real estate person to tell us what the value is? Why are we guessing what it's worth?
I can answer that. I guess on some of these lots that we're looking at, we had, we sent, the EDA just recently sold one to Matt Doer that had been vacant for numerous years. It was owned industrial. It wasn't big enough to build on. There were some challenges with it, and the EDA did sell that, I think, to him for five thousand dollars. I looked at, this is a similar lot. I think you are gonna have some issues trying to find someone to come in here. A real estate appraisal can be quite expensive, and I just don't know that we're gonna get a return on our investment. I look at this as a lot that, if we can help the apartment with some of their parking issues, help some of the neighbors having to deal with some of the parking on the streets, get another lot back on the tax roll, in my mind, I, I saw only good things coming from that. I did sell real estate back in the day, so I have a little bit of background knowledge myself. I think, as I said, we would have some struggles selling that lot, because I don't know that, that's an infill lot that a lot of people wanna buy next to a, an apartment. And it is zoned R4, which is a higher-density residential. So like I said, I, in my mind, I saw more drawbacks from it than benefits. But I do think you make a valid point, and I think if it was a larger parcel or something that had that value, we would definitely check into it. But this is a parcel that, in my mind, I just don't know that it was worth spending the extra time and money on.
What would it cost us to get someone to give us a professional evaluation of the value of that land?
I would say anywhere between five hundred and two thousand dollars.
And I guess I'd like to go ahead and state that I certainly appreciate the questions, Councilmember Krogman. And I also know that the due diligence on this property has been done by our city staff. And I know that the reason why you're voicing these questions, quite honestly, is so that everybody that either listens to our meetings or is here in attendance will certainly know that there's an awful lot of effort that's put forth. We just don't pull a number out. So, okay. Any other questions or concerns?
But just to piggyback on it, it seems to me, and I don't, as I've stated in EDA and for a number of months here, I don't know ditherly about economic development. But from my observations, it seems to me it's partly science and partly art. There's some experience and, and some intangibles that enter in here rather than, than the quantifiable objective numbers. So that's what I'm learning anyway.
What would the return be on, if, if, let's assume it's worth five thousand, and that now becomes part of that property, how much more income will we get every year through the levy?
A property like that, it would likely be reassessed after purchased and repurposed. So if they put a parking lot on it, the, the county could look at it, and it might be worth more money if they, if they improve it. Right now, a thirty thousand dollar piece of property, we're probably looking at five hundred to a thousand dollars a year from, for the city's portion of property taxes.
Well, but it's not, we're not saying it's worth thirty thousand. We're, we're selling it for five. If there's improvements, whatever that makes it be, the return is gonna take a while for us to get our money back, so to speak.
Exactly.
Yeah, and, and just to note, I know that Ms. DiMaggio mentioned that it was off the tax, so it's been off the tax roll for seventy-five years. We've really haven't used it for the last thirty-five. So if you think about what that money is, if it would have been added to the tax roll thirty-five years ago, we would make that up. But I just don't wanna get into a situation where it sits longer and eventually, they end up getting it anyway for the same price, and, and we end up not getting that tax benefit. So it's, it's a risk. I mean, if, and it's a city council decision. You know, we have an offer that we're evaluating. If we wanna hold on to the land, we, we sure can, but there's no guarantees that we'll, we'll have a seller, or a buyer, sorry.
We, we are dealing with a number of properties tonight, and, and we've talked in budgeting and talked in personnel budget about the property that the city owns throughout the community, and that we need to start getting that on the property roll. So that, can you just comment on the, on the bigger picture? Because these are pieces in a bigger puzzle, correct?
Correct. If you, so the, the way Samantha and myself look at it is, we combine the EDA and the city into, under one umbrella. So if you think about it, the Plum Run lots, I believe there are eight there?
Ten.
Ten there, and then we had seven with Agri Pier. We have this one. That's, so we're up to eighteen lots that we're potentially putting back on the tax roll. That's pretty big for a community our size. You know, that's, if you, if you look at what we have, we have around eighteen hundred parcels within the city. And we add eighteen, you know, that's, that's a significant amount, and that's unprecedented. Now, that money, those properties will bring in money in perpetuity. So that's, that's what we're looking at as far as getting those back on. In my opinion, and I believe Samantha's opinion, it's not our role to hold these properties for the, for the best, best person to come in. It's important that it gets back into the private, private realm, and then people can make decisions and, and grow the town.
In perpetuity. That sounds like a George Will word. In perpetuity.
Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion then for waiving the second reading of the ordinance of the sale of PID twenty-one dot nine 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 dot zero zero five zero to Dennis Investments Incorporated, La Sure Apartments. This property is being sold as is. Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional questions, concerns, thoughts? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to nine Hotel, which is the police officer appointment.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, we have, just went through a reorganization process, and this is one of the first hires that we had out there. There should be a packet that was provided with information about the, the police officer that is recommended. So if you, if you're interested in that, there should be some available up, on the table up front. So Police Chief Bruce Kelly is recommending the hire of Mr. Daniel Reich to fill the position, which is vacant for the police officer, for a police officer in the, in the La Sure Police Department. So Officer Reich has been part of the, the La Sure team. He has worked as a part-time officer since two thousand and fourteen, so he's a familiar face. This is kind of how we would like to kind of grow our police force, to be able to have them be a part-time, and then potentially get them be a full-time officer. It's very important that we learn, and we know, and we know who we're inviting into our community to be a police officer. And this is a great situation where the police chief and the sergeants that have, have had a chance to get to know Officer Reich, and that they're then making that recommendation. So Officer Reich has went through both the psychological testing and pre-employment physical. This position is a union position. The proposed wage, based on previous experience, is a step six. So on the, in the LELS, the law enforcement, or local, I forget what it stands for, no, law enforcement, something compensation scale, they have one, they have one grade. So if you look back, and if you remember what our compensation scale is for the whole city, there's, there's, I believe, twenty grades and nine steps in each one. They just have one grade with nine steps. So based on the experience that Officer Reich has, he would fall into that step six within that scale, which is fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-six cents annually. I have included his resume in the packet for review. I know this is the first time you guys are seeing this, so if you need time to look at it, feel free. Otherwise, I can entertain any questions you may have about the appointment of Officer Reich.
Perhaps we take a few minutes to go ahead and review the resume, then if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can bring that up. Fair enough?
Yeah, Officer Reich, if you, if you're looking at his resume, he's got a lot of experience. I don't have a PowerPoint with his resume on here, but he's, he's got a wealth of experience, a lot of certifications. I think he'll be a great fit for the group that we have here as police officers in the city of La Sure. Just as a note, we are going from having two sergeants to having one sergeant, and now we will have five officers if this hire is approved. So that's part of the reorg that we, that was passed earlier this year.
Question I have would be, is how many candidates did we have come forth for this position?
I'll pass that along to Ms. Lawrence.
Forty-five. Forty-five candidates, and we brought that number down to what for our selection criteria?
I think we had it down to six.
Okay. So for everybody out there to kind of understand the process, perhaps we can kind of let the community know what the process consists of, so that they're aware.
Yep, so it was a pretty lengthy process. We started interviews, as we said, narrowed it down from forty-five. They took the top candidates via their test scores. And then we did interviews. They consisted of Police Chief Kelly, Sergeant Tiki, and myself. And then we brought, there was a few that, I think one candidate took themselves out of the running, but then, as we interviewed more, we just were looking for the right fit. They were very, very particular about the fit they were looking for, so we continued to bring in candidates, and Officer Reich rose to the top of those.
So then obviously, just to make sure, I can recap if I could. We started with forty-five. We went to six, and we came up with our ideal candidate here. And certainly, this individual's been vetted. He's had opportunity to go ahead and work within the city of La Sure in a part-time capacity already. He's already, he knows the lay of the land, so to say, and he knows the community. Would there be anything that would be objectionable regarding any of the hiring process associated with this individual?
No. Sergeant Tiki and Chief Kelly were very particular about it, did a great job, and really had a high, high bar for this hire.
Thank you. Any additional questions for our city clerk, Ms. Lawrence?
I have one, and this may lead to a bigger question that maybe sometime could be handled in the work session. But over the last few years, nationally, internationally, statewide, police have gotten, they get into predicaments that now with the body cameras and so forth and so on, or diversity issues, get into a whole area of de-escalation and skills, to me, that look like they should already have, but maybe some don't. Do we, and I realize we're not, we're not Minneapolis, we're not New York, do we, do we, how do we screen or, or evaluate candidates as to their psychological patience, tolerance, ability to de-escalate without, you know, where they can be a hero and not kill somebody, rather than just be a hero and prevent somebody, if you mean, you get, you get what I'm getting at? Is that at all discussed?
I do. It's part of their psych evaluation, which City Administrator Krugel can probably enlighten us a little more on that process.
Yeah, so once, and these things cost money, so we don't send every single candidate up there to get a psych test. But once we identify a candidate that we think will, will be a potential fill for the position, we'll send them up, I believe, to the University of Minnesota. They go through a series of testing. It takes a whole day. So they go through, and then they get a report back about their psychological standing. And it's not something that you can fake. It's not something that you can just make up and pass. It's, you know, you have trained professionals making an evaluation and giving a recommendation. Now, this is common practice for all police forces, and there's things that happen with people that pass these psychological tests. But those are the tools that are used to help kind of vet those things. And, I mean, there's, there's situations, I'm sure, that happen where they fail the, the psych test, and then they're, they're not a candidate. So we have some, some checks and balances in place. The easiest, the best thing that the city of La Sure has going for them is that, with, with this hire, is that they know who this person is. They've worked with them. A lot of the big cities that you have, you get a lot of people coming in that you don't know personally. Officer Reich is known personally by every member that's, that's a, that's an officer. So we have an advantage of being in a small town where we can, we can know those people a little bit better as opposed to a larger department. But there's, there's always the, the risk. There's always a risk of this, and we try to minimize that risk by, by performing these tests.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I wanted to make sure that I clarify that when I introduced Ms. Lawrence, she's also our human resources expert for the city of La Sure, as well as being city clerk. So she certainly knows what's expected and required for the hiring and firing and everything associated with employment issues. So thank you. With that said, looking for a motion then to appoint the recommended candidate as a police officer for the city of La Sure.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's carried.
Do we hand these in then?
Yes. Let's make sure we take these and get them back to Stacy here. Okay. And we'd like to welcome Officer Reich to the city of La Sure. Looking forward to get the opportunity to sit down and have a conversation with him in the very near future. Okay, we now move on to line item nine India, which is a public service director appointment.
Mayor Hag, members of the city council, this is probably the most excited I've been to hire somebody. So again, we went through an extensive interview process. I believe we had a smaller interview pool, but this is a, a more specialized position. I believe we had fourteen candidates. We narrowed it down to four. We conducted first-round interviews with three of them. One, one of the individuals that was identified as a top candidate withdrew. So we were down to three, and then we had a second round of interviews that involved two people. And from there, Richard Cuchara was a, was a clear favorite among staff. So the first interview consisted of Bruce Kelly, Stacy Lawrence, and myself. The second round of interview, there was actually two panels. The first panel was the leadership team, along with Ms. Lawrence, myself, and Mr. Kelly. It was Samantha DiMaggio and Lane Wilbright sat in on those. And then the second half of that, second interview, they met with all of the managers, Park Superintendent Tom Gurlik, Airport Manager Andy Semensky down here, and just to get a good feel, personality-wise, if they would get a good fit. Richard Cuchara rose to the top for that. He's very well-qualified, as you can see from his resume. He's got over thirteen years of municipal public works experience. He's currently employed as the wastewater plant supervisor in Northfield, Minnesota. He currently has an A wastewater operator license. He has a B water license. So he's, he meets all the requirements. This is, this was not a requirement of the position, but it's kind of almost a, it's a, it's an added benefit that we get by hiring somebody like this. Previously, he was employed as the Public Works Director for the city of Medford, Minnesota. He has a bachelor of science degree in business administration. He was on the dean's list for that. And he was a participant in the Blennen Community Leadership Program. So I'm not sure if, if people are familiar with that, but it's an interesting group and a, a, a program that can help guide leadership within a community. So what you'll see, the offer letter has been attached in the packet that I have given out. What the offer consisted of is a salary based on previous compensation and experience at a grade seventeen, step six, which is ninety-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents annually. If approved, the start date would be on June eighteenth, so roughly, what would that be, three weeks? Little, little under three weeks, which is great to get somebody in here that quickly. We were, we were planning on around mid-July. We were, we were planning on around mid-July. Further step increases would be annually on his anniversary, depending on satisfactory review. This is a non-union position. So we agreed, or I agreed to set, treat him as he has completed ten years of service for the purposes of PTO accrual. So what that means is he'll start accruing at that rate of nine point five four hours per pay period. I felt this was appropriate, based on his thirteen years in municipal government already. Also agreed to start him with a PTO balance of eighty hours to accommodate previous time off obligations. Rich is forty-two years old, I believe. He's got a young family. They have vacations and things like that that have already been scheduled. So trying to accommodate that work-life balance with, with that balance of PTO to start off with. This position qualifies for the, the vehicle allowance of four hundred dollars a month and the choice of either having a mobile telephone allowance or the city providing a phone. Rich has indicated he is interested in the mobile telephone allowance. Also, in the offer letter, you'll see that there, there's the agreement that the city will support financially the, the maintenance of his water license, his wastewater license, his Type Four Waste Disposal Operator License, and his Certified Pool Operator License. In general, the city supports licenses that are applicable. The, the pool operator license may not be, but it might be something good just to maintain. It was requested, so we included it in the offer letter. So with that, I don't know if you've had time to look at the, the packet, but what I'm recommending is approving the hire of Mr. Richard Cuchara as the Public Services Director with the terms as described.
Can you just, you just quickly overview this, this position's responsibilities and why, how you foresee this being an improvement, a real benefit for our communities as we look at the comprehensive plan and the community development?
Yeah, so I think I was officially the first Public Services Director here at the city of La Sure, which I was, I believe, in that official capacity, well, since then. Basically, I've been in the official capacity, splitting time with the city administrator role as well. The big aspect and what I believe the, the role was intended for was to help with planning and to, to make sure that our largest department, our Public Services Department, is properly planning, budgeting, using money wisely to make sure that we can provide these essential services to the public. Now, having somebody in that position with this kind of expertise is, is very important. You don't want to hire somebody that doesn't have this experience, that's going to just kind of wing it, and you hope they'll, they'll do a good job. Mr. Cuchara has this experience overwhelmingly above and beyond the other candidates. I think we're, we're getting a good candidate, a very good candidate with some very good skills that'll, that'll help us achieve those goals of the comprehensive plan. You know, just using our money wisely. I'm very excited to see what, what he sees in our budgeting process and, and budget, and see if he can pick out things that maybe I haven't caught that can save the city some money and stretch that dollar a little further. So.
So he's overseeing the streets and parks and electricity and wa, water and wastewater? Anything else?
Facilities and stormwater. So major, major part of the, the city. It's just the, the upper tier, upper echelon of just oversight of that whole department.
Thank you. I wonder whether or not you might be able to go ahead and explain to those out watching or in attendance what the SCADA softwares that we currently use so that everyone is understanding that because this individual's not living within La Sure, he'd still have an eye on what's going on within the community through this SCADA software.
Yeah, so our SCADA software are kind of essentially our eyes and ears for all of our equipment that we use in water, wastewater. So if something goes haywire, there's an alarm that goes off. A lot of the stuff is tied into our data network, and we're able to, you know, shut a pump off, run a pump, things like that remotely. So, and a lot of that, a lot of those duties are passed along to the managers and the operators. Operators are on call for two hours at a ti, or two weeks at a time. And then they're off for six or eight weeks, depending on how many people we have. But most, most minor issues can be fixed remotely through, through our remote SCADA system. So.
And then the follow-up question would be, our Murpuck, our Minnesota River Valley Public Utility Commission currently requires an A license, and certainly Mr. Cuchara has that A license. What are we currently doing regarding our licensing in the position that we're in right now? And why, again, this is such an attractive fit to find a candidate that has these types of qualifications?
Yeah, so right now, Murpuck employs a third party to, to meet the, the A operator license requirements. It'll be a Murpuck decision how to move forward on this. But we do, we will have an A license in-house that could potentially save some money. Now, I believe the individual that's, that's performing those duties right now is, is also doing duties above and beyond what's required for the A license. Now, we're paying that on an hourly rate. So that'll be a conversation that we'll have to have at Murpuck at the next meeting if, if this is an option. So at the earliest, I could see if, if approved, Rich getting in here on the eighteenth, getting settled in. Maybe, maybe the July meeting, meeting the Murpuck group and talking to them and, and letting them know his skill set and see if that's something that they would like to proceed utilizing to meet the, the A license requirement.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding Mr. Cuchara for employment within the city of La Sure? If not, entertain a motion then to recommend, to the recommended candidate as the Public Services Director for the city of La Sure.
So move.
Is there a second?
I was second.
Any additional questions, concerns, thoughts? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay. We now move into our, what we call our comments, reports, and items of appreciation. Before we get started on that, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that tonight at 6:00 PM, we are going to have a tree dedication to Councilmember Kevin Wilkie over at Legion Park. But due to some unforeseen circumstances through Mother Nature, we decided for safety, more than anything, to go ahead and postpone that to a later date, at which time we'll go ahead and make sure the community is informed so those that would like to attend can be there. That said, I'd like to go ahead and start off with Councilmember Crowman tonight.
I have nothing, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Wil, or, I'm roll off, I'm sorry.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Huntington?
Well, I do. Murpuck, since our, my chairman is not here tonight, Mr. Favalis. Our last meeting, we approved the pre-screening project by, to about six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That will start construction, I believe, later on this fall, I think. And that's what I have.
Okay. So you say that construction will start in the fall of twenty eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Anything from Minnesota River Valley Transit?
No, that's the last meeting.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson?
So can I just ask a follow-up question on that?
Please.
Six hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars? How does, so Murpuck approved that? So the city, we don't really get directly involved in, in, with the street project? I realize that was a couple million, but on this big project, we don't get involved in all the engineering and the public hearings and all that kind of stuff?
No, it's all done by Murpuck.
But they follow a similar process?
Yes. Go out for bids. We hire an engineering firm to do it.
And the only difference is that because we're not levying assessments, they don't have, or they don't have to follow the 429 process. So that's the other large added step that we have to do if, if we choose to levy assessments on street projects. So it really simplifies it. You know, plans and specs are developed, they're approved by the board. The engineer is authorized, they go out to bid, the engineer brings the bids back, and the board approves, awards a bid, and then you get a timeline. So it's a very similar process. I would say it's easier because of the, you don't, you don't have to do the 429 process.
Then I have three short items.
Okay.
One, just a reminder that, that the city still has a representative on the Ridgeview La Sure Health Center Board. And I go to monthly meetings as your representative on that. And we get, we get representation from the Ridgeview Board coming to that meeting, as well as the La Sure Board members and Pam Williams now, who's the Vice President and kind of the local head of our, local head of our plant here. And nothing earth-shaking there, but the transition's been going on, you know, for a couple of years. And, and Ridgeview is negotiating with Mayo now in regard to operation of the clinics. There's actually two clinics operating. And, and how, who's going to have what space and how that's going to work is currently being negotiated, and that will be implemented this fall. But the goal and the preference, I think, from the community has been that we keep two clinics, that that's, provides for more service to community members in that way. And so that's, that's happening. So just, if you have questions that come up in regard to that, that you want me to answer, bring forward, I can do that. Second item was our Comprehensive Plan Action Team. We're, we had a meeting here about a month ago. We're waiting for some indication from the county and state in regard to parameters for how Main Street might be reopened or, or reutilized. And Jasper and I have talked about that a little bit, and I'm not trying to push you into an update because I, I know that's still loose ends out there. But in order to have a future, the city forum, and talk about the downtown master plan, and get the community back and updated and so forth, that's kind of a, that's kind of a point of information we need. We need to know what the parameters for what, what we'd be allowed to do with Main Street from a state and a county point of view are. So just, we're just waiting on that right now. And the third thing is, I'd like to, I'd like to express appreciation to Jasper for the update that he, he's been providing. And I think now it went through the Nextdoor. I mean, I, I accessed this by, I saw it through Nextdoor, which is a kind of a neighborhood, neighborhood, I don't know what you call it. It's a blog or whatever. But I appreciate the updates, and I think community members would appreciate the updates too. Especially the most recent one that you see developing is the dog park and the fence going up and so forth. And so there were a lot of other things, but that in particular came up as a question on the Nextdoor website. And a couple of days later, this is out. And so I'd like to, I think this is really good.
I concur.
And Stacy maybe has a hand in helping with that too, I don't know.
Well, how about Ms. Lawrence? Do you have anything for us tonight? Okay. How about our city legal beagle back? Do you have anything for us tonight, sir? And how about our city administrator, Jasper Krugel?
All right, I got four quick things. Our PAC, so Recreation Park Advisory Committee, just saw, received applications number five and six today. So we have exceeded the five. So the next meeting, you'll see, and you'll be able to evaluate those applications, which is exciting because then we can get that board started. The dog park is, as you can see, under construction. Posts have been inserted into the ground, the, what they call the fabric, the chain of the, of the fence should be installed by the end of the week. So you'll start to see it take shake, shape. The next step is to put some concrete slabs down for benches and picnic tables and a drinking fountain and kind of prepping in the dog wash station. So the idea is that by mid-July, we'll be able to do some plantings, get some volunteers out there, and then maybe around August first, have an official grand opening event, which is great. I think there's a lot of excitement. There's a, one particular resident, Judith, Judith Jones, she is on the Charter Commission. She's very excited about the dog park. She actually started a Friends of the La Sure Dog Park Facebook group, which I think there are eighteen members in already. So that'd be great.
Are they humans or dogs? What are they?
I think they're all humans.
Okay, thank you.
So that's exciting. People are getting excited about some of the projects that we're doing. Another one that's in the, in the area of, of our parks is the outdoor pool concrete sidewalk project that was approved. Essentially, that, we hope, locates have been called in. The contractor thinks they might be able to get that rolling before the pool officially opens on June fourth. So there potentially could be a, a walkway from the parking lot up to the concession area for the pool, which is something I feel is long overdue. I think it'll look great, and I'm excited for kind of the, the change of feel in that area. I think it'll be a, a better utilized space in our park. And the last thing I'll touch on, Dave alluded to, we are, we are meeting with MINDOT in the county about what our options are for Main Street. We have a meeting scheduled down in Mankato for June eleventh. So we should get some feedback from MINDOT. And MINDOT doesn't like to give you direction unless they get final plans and specs for a project. So we're trying to feel out what they need from us to approve the project and see once if we can develop some plans to officially submit to them, knowing what their parameters are or what they will be before they say no. So we should get a good feeling from that meeting if there is potential for that to be opened. And if there is, what kind of stipulations there will be and what those costs could be. So very shortly, we should be able to update the group on, on those developments.
That's a question about the dog park?
Yeah.
So these picnic tables, are those for the dogs or the owners?
They're officially for the owners. But both. And they are, just so everybody knows, they are ADA accessible picnic tables. So the idea is that you can access it via a wheelchair if needed. Or if you're, you know, the ADA accessible means there's a little bit more space too. So they're, they're neat.
Picknick with the pooch.
And I do have a couple of things. First off, I'd like to go ahead and do a shout-out to the entire community that took their time a week ago, Sunday, to show up over at the bar for the Celebration of Life for Councilmember Kevin Wilkie. We had an extreme, huge amount of people that showed up, so thank you to everyone that attended. And secondly, I'd like to give a shout-out to Park Elementary School, the second grade class in particular. Got bombarded with a whole bunch of thank-you notes regarding our Arbor Day celebration. So I'll leave these up here for council members and also for any of the community members that would like to take a look at them. They're up here. And with that said, I'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, and thank you to all in attendance tonight.